Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call this regular session of Shirts City Council Meeting, December 2nd, 2025, meeting to order. First item of business for this evening is the opening prayer and pledges of allegiance to the flags of the United States and the state of Texas. We'll start with Councilman Guerrero leading us in the opening prayer. If everybody please stand.
Please bow your heads. Lord, we ask for strength, courage, and wisdom for each one of us to make the best decisions for our city. Please watch over this entire city council meeting as we all work together towards resolution of existing challenges and/or issues for the best interest of our residents. We worship you, Lord, as we accept your son, Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you for that, Councilman Guerrero. We have presentations of Traps 2025 Central Region Awards to the Shirts Park and Recreation Department. Sarah Gonzalez?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Williams. I'm Lauren Schram, Director of Parks and Recreation and Community Services for the City of Shirts, and I am super pleased tonight to present some awards that the Shirts Parks and Recreation Department has won recently. But I also just wanted to review with you quickly about the Texas Recreation and Parks Society Central Region Workshop that we hosted here in Shirts a couple weeks ago. It was a very big deal for us. We were the host city, so we hosted the maintenance rodeo out at the Shirts Soccer Complex. We had 335 attendees representing 18 agencies in Central Region of Texas. So we go as far west as Kerrville, as far north as Waco, over to the east, College Station, and down here in Shirts. So we've got Austin, Round Rock, everything in between. There's seven different events. You can see some pictures there of some of the events: irrigation assembly, backpack blower, truck and trailer. And then we hosted a workshop over here at the Civic Center. We also were in this room, the City Council Chambers. We were in the community center and the conference room. So we had 265 attendees, 26 agencies participated, and we had 21 education sessions. So, big lift. There's a committee of the region that helps us, but the staff here, you know, obviously are responsible for a majority of the work. So I'm super thankful for them. They did Shirts proud. And we are super excited to present to you the awards for our maintenance rodeo. The Shirts Team 1 and Team 2 came in first and second place. So those folks are now headed on to the state maintenance rodeo in Corpus Christi in February, and I'll be happy to come back in February and tell you we won the whole thing. So I'm going to bring them up as I call their name, and then I will take a photo. First place, Zero Turn Mower, Ray Tykwinko. First place, Truck and Trailer, Cole Moody and Stephen Lovelace. First place, Backhoe Operation, Ian King. First place, Irrigation Assembly, Ian King and Diego Martinez. First place, Nail Drive, Cole Moody. Fourth place, Backhoe Operation, Robert Dobratz. And sixth place, Plant and Weed Identification, Stephen Lovelace. Come on down, y'all. And there's more awards. So, real quick, we also won awards for our programming in Shirts. So we won the Lone Star Programming Award for the Together We Play Inclusive Event that we did with the library out at the community playscape. We had wheelchair basketball. We had resources for families with kids with autism. We had all kinds of things out there. It was a great event. We won the Arts and Humanities Award for the Monsters Vale Collegium program where they do the live-action role play and teach leather making classes and things like that. We won photos for every category except one because we didn't submit. So, seven out of the eight, and those are the wonderful photos there of our programs that we won. So I'm going to invite everybody else to come up with the awards now, and love to have Mayor come down and take a photo with us. But congratulations to this awesome team. You guys are amazing. Mayor, you want to come on over here?
Yeah.
Thank you. You're so awesome.
Thank you very much to the Shirts family, to the Shirts team that participated and won those awards. You definitely made Shirts proud. Go Shirts! Next item is presentation of the 2026 Class of Shirts Young Leaders, and we have Ms. Schroom and Ms. Paddock.
Yes, thank you. So our Shirts Young Leaders Program, just a little about it. We have our 2025-26 schedule here. We just, we selected our 12 students for this year in September, and then they had their leadership retreat in October of 2022. They went to a ropes course in Georgetown, and they've also had their first meeting with our leadership consultant, Jay Johnson, and heard from Sarah and Brian that day as well. So they've had a little bit of time to get to know each other and start developing, but we have still a big year ahead of us in January. We'll be talking about education and developing emotional intelligence, where we kind of tie in the school district and the Alamo area colleges. And then in February, we'll talk about local government. That's the class where you guys are invited to come speak if you would like. And then they also take a tour of City Hall and EMS and Fire and PD. And then in March, we'll have Communication and Community. So talking about teamwork, the key to success, supporting small businesses, things like that. And then in April, we have our base tour at JBSA Randolph with Continued Growth Setting Intentions. And then May 7th will be their graduation, which all of councils invited to as well. We'll present kind of what they learned to the year, and they have a nice dinner with their families. Also, to note, students must attend one city council meeting, so that's the one here tonight, and then they'll attend one school board meeting in January and volunteer at one event, which for most of them will be holladazzle. And for those that can't attend holladazzle, they'll come to some of the other things we have going on later in the year. So next, I'm going to have them each kind of come up and introduce themselves to you guys. So here's our Shirts Young Leaders Class of 25-26, first up. If you guys want to just kind of all come up, but this is the order that you'll be in. Ally, you'll be first.
Hi, I'm Ally Hibner, and I'm a junior at Samuel Clemens High School.
Hi, my name's Celeste Boyd, and I'm a junior at Samuel Clemens High School.
Hi, my name is CJ Sweet, and I'm a junior at Samuel Clemens High School.
My name is Evan Powell, and I'm a junior at Samuel Clemens.
I'm Evelyn Humphrey, and I'm also a junior at Samuel Clemens High School.
Hi, my name is Jackson Steinorf, and I'm a junior at Samuel Clemens High School.
Good evening. I'm Jamie, and I am Jamie Cromer, and I am from Samuel Clemens High School, a junior.
Hi, my name is Peyton Staley, and I'm also a junior at Samuel Clemens High School.
Hello, I'm Sarah Gutierrez. I'm also a junior at Samuel Clemens.
Good evening. My name's Alana Solgado Pinero, and I'm a senior at Samuel Clemens High School.
Hi, my name is Alexis Moreno, and I'm also a senior at Samuel Clemens High School.
Hi, my name is Shayanna Hunter, and I'm the only Steel student. I'm in 11th grade. I go to Steel High School. Thank you.
We're really excited. We're going to have a great year ahead, and I'll have you guys come up for a photo as well. And Mayor, if you want to join us.
I just want to say congratulations to the 2026 Class of Shirts Young Leaders for being selected into the program. I know y'all will do some great things. Looking forward to see what y'all are going to be doing in 2026. Congratulations. Next, we have the presentation on the upcoming holladazzle event.
Yes, I'm back. Okay, so this week, we have all of our holiday festivities, and we're actually going to kick it off with Deck the City Hall on Thursday. So we'll have crafts and activities. We have a holiday craft. Our Silver Serenaders Choir from the Shirts Senior Center comes and performs, and we have a little photo booth. And then we'll also obviously have the holiday lights. So we'll have our buildings and trees and canopy lights that are all going to get lit at 6 o'clock. And then we'll have cookies and hot cocoa as well there, and candy canes and things like that to pass out. So we'd love to have you guys join us. It's at 6:00 PM over at, right in front of Building 1. So that will be on Thursday, December 4th, and you have more information in your packets as well. And then on Saturday, December 6th, we have holladazzle. So the holladazzle is four events in one day. So we start off in the morning with Breakfast with Santa. That is going to be over at the Shirts Civic Center in the Blue Bonnet Hall. We have three different time slots. All three are full, and we have about 80 in each time slot there. And breakfast is provided by Abel's Diner. They sponsor that every year, and they come and make the pancakes and help us pass them out. And then right across the hall at Civic Center and the grand ballroom is our Kris Kringle Market. That is going to be from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We have 35-plus vendors, which is full. We have 40 vendor spots, but some vendors pick two spots because they have such a big setup. So that is full, but over 35 vendors there. So if you need to get some last-minute holiday shopping done, that's a great place to go look. And then in the evening, we'll open up at the Sports Complex with our Holiday Hoopla from 4:00 to 8:00. So we've got fireside roasting and toasting. So River City Community Church comes and does smores, and then we'll have food trucks, photos with Santa from 4:00 to 5:30, and then Santa's got to skedaddle over to the parade at 5:30. So if you want your picture with Santa, come early. We also have our Mount Shirts Snow Hill, some snowplay areas, an ice skating rink, inflatables, face painting, and balloon twisters, all free of charge for residents to come and enjoy with their families for the holiday. And then at 6:00 PM, our Festival of Angels Parade kicks off. So parade staging is in Pickrell Park, which starts at 4:30 is when we open up parade staging. Our road closures will begin around 4 o'clock, starting with that section of where we do the parade staging on Arrow. And then at 5:00 PM, major roads will start to shut down, and then by 5:30, all the roads along the parade route will be shut down for the parade to safely step off at 6:00 PM. And there's more information in your packets for council as well. There is a council shuttle. So if you guys park over here, facilities will shuttle you over to the parade staging if you want to be on the council float. Here's the route, just for your awareness. It's the same as last year. So we start staging on Arrow. We'll come down Oak and turn onto 1518 down Main Street, back up Shirts Parkway, and then it'll end actually right here at the main complex. They go, continue going past the dog park and disband in that large parking lot back there. And I will take any comments or questions about holladazzle.
Any comments or questions?
Hope to see you all there.
Thank you very much. We're definitely looking forward to the holladazzle. Okay, moving on to city events and announcements. We're going to go ahead and start with announcements of upcoming city events. Mr. James?
Thank you, Mayor. So some of these are a little bit of repeat of Cassie's presentation, but just in case folks didn't catch it, Deck the City Hall starts at 6:00 PM on Thursday here at 1400 Shirts Parkway. Saturday, we have holladazzle kicks off with Breakfast with Santa. Those sessions are full. But then the Kris Kringle Market at the Civic Center from 10:00 to 3:00, Holiday Hoopla, 4:00 to 5:30, and then we've got the Festival of Angels Parade at the complex as well. Just a reminder for folks of the election coming up to fill the council spot. First day to early vote is Wednesday, December 3rd, tomorrow. The last day to apply for a mail ballot, and that's to be received, not postmarked, is Tuesday, December 9th. Last day to early vote is Tuesday, December 16th. Early voting and Election Day polling locations are the Elections Office at the Shirts Annex here, 1101 Elbel, or the Elections Office in Sagin, 3251 North Highway 123. Early voting hours are 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and then Election Day, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And lastly, our next meeting is back here December 16th.
All right. Thank you for that. Next, we have announcements and recognitions by the city manager. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a couple promotions this week, or this month. In November, we had Irene Chavez promoted from Purchasing Specialist to Assistant City Secretary, and we had Tyler, and she's sitting right over there. And we had Tyler Boker. He was promoted from Community Health Coordinator to EMS Assistant Chief, and Lauren Vargas. Very good. Normally don't get an applause, but I'm glad we do. And Lauren Vargas promoted from Apprentice Plumber to Journeyman Plumber. And lastly, Stephen Lovelace promoted from part-time maintenance tech to full-time park maintenance tech as well. And I do love talking about the promotions because that means that folks are working hard, and they're moving it up in our organization, taking on greater responsibility, and I love to see them improve themselves as well as improve our organization and help build a stronger organization, so.
Congrat, lots of congratulations to those individuals. Thank y'all for a good accomplishment. All right, moving on to hearings, hearing of residents. This time is set aside for any person who wishes to address the city council. Each person should fill out the speaker's register prior to the meeting. Presentations should be limited to no more than three minutes. When you step up to the mic, please give your name and your address. Councilman Davis, do we have anybody to speak?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First one up is Mr. Dana Eldridge.
My name is Dana Eldridge, 2628 Gallant Fox Drive, Shirts, Texas, 78108. I'm up here today to talk about Consent Agenda Item Number 7. We've talked for many years about Main Street Initiative, and how we're going to upgrade Main Street and do all that kind of stuff. And now, all of a sudden, I see the City of Shirts is going to be a property owner on, at 710 Main Street in Shirts, Texas. We're going to authorize in excess of $200,000 to purchase a house right next to Main Street Automotive. I'm surprised that it's on the consent agenda rather than some kind of discussion as to what's going on and what it's going to be used for. You know, we got hit with the trash upgraded that, then we all got hit with an additional dollar and 10 cents on that for hazardous waste, that if we don't use hazardous waste, we've still spent a dollar and 10 a month for that, which it was supposed to be when we had hazardous waste, not if. So my question is, why are we going, why is this a consent item, and why are we spending $200,000 or more to purchase a house on Main Street for the City of Shirts?
Thank you for coming up. Councilman Davis, do we have any additional speakers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Next up is Ms. Maggie Titterington.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. Just a very few short announcements. December's a very busy month. We're wrapping up things at the chamber and already kicking things into gear for 2026. We do have one ribbon cutting this month, and that is December 10th. It will be at our Chamber offices in Shirts at 10:00 AM, and it's going to be welcoming New Edda Sigma alumni. It's a group of wonderful women, Alumni Association, and they were at our last luncheon, but we're going to be welcoming them officially into the chamber on the 10th. Also, we are having a December luncheon. We normally don't do that either, but because we had that Freeze Fest in January, we're going to make up for it. And this luncheon is actually going to feature a little snippet about AI. This guest speaker is coming in from Austin, but he's also going to be doing an education course in January for three hours and breaking down just all the stuff about AI. There's a lot of fear. There's a lot of trepidation, hesitation to use it in businesses, what is ethical, what is not. And so he's actually going to break this session down into two sessions in January, but just kind of, like I said, tease us at this luncheon and tell us a little bit of the things he's going to be covering. So RSVPs are still active right now until next Monday, so just go to the website or call us, and we can get you registered in. And last but not least, we are gearing up and selling out booths for our Health and Home Show. We have named it Living Well. It's going to include about 70 vendors over at the Civic Center, both sides, and in the front, offering free flu shots, free health screenings. There's going to be home health providers that are going to be plumbers and roofers and things like that. So it'll be from 10:00 to 1:00 on the last Saturday of January. I believe that is the 31st. And that's all I have. Happy holidays. I'm sure I will see you around town at all of these events and looking forward to a great new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens?
That is it, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any other citizens wishing to come up and speak? Okay, we'll go ahead and close citizens to be heard, and we'll Okay, we'll go ahead and close citizens to be heard, and we'll go ahead and move on to the Consent Agenda Items. The Consent Agenda is considered self-explanatory and will be enacted by the council with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless they are removed from the Consent Agenda upon the request of the mayor or council member. Any of the council members have any of the items on the Consent Agenda they would like to have removed?
Mayor, since we had a resident come up and ask about seven, we should pull seven so we can have some discussion. Staff can make a discussion.
Okay, any other agenda item wanting to get pulled from the Consent Agenda? Okay, can I get a motion to have Agenda Items, Consent Agenda Items 1 through 6?
So moved?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Councilwoman Hayward, a second by Councilwoman Watson. Go ahead and cast your votes. Can we get the votes published, please? Okay, we have six yays and no nays. Consent Agenda Item passes. Moving on to Discussion and Action Items. Oh, go ahead.
It's Discussion/Action Item now.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and place Item 7 on Discussion and Action Items. So we'll go ahead and move on to Number 7, Resolution 25-R-171, authorizing the land acquisition of 710 Main Street for an amount not to exceed $194,000, plus closing costs specifying funding sources and other matters in connection therewith. Mr. James?
Thank you, Mayor. As council knows and the community knows, we have been working for some time on our revitalization program for Main Street. Now, we started that early off with some planning efforts. And as a result of those planning efforts, some of the recommendations were to make ordinance changes to make it easier to redevelop. Again, many of those were built initially as residential homes. Our current ordinances create challenges converting those to businesses. We also modified some of the design standards to better fit the character of Main Street. We have incentive programs that we've put in place, the Historic Main Street Grant and the Local Flavor Economic Development Grant that we've done as well. Additionally, we've tried to highlight some of the things going on on Main Street. We had the event Moving on Main that we did down there to bring folks. And we've seen that reinvestment activity. And in fact, probably that's a function of why we're paying $194,000 now for the property at 710 Main Street, because when we started this, probably could have gotten it for half that. I think the hope is that, again, as we move forward, the prices will go up. And so the opportunity presented itself to purchase this property. One of the reasons that we've talked about this with the Main Street Committee for a while is, while we try to incent private investment into Main Street, sometimes those tools we have with the grant programs aren't quite enough. One of the ideas that's been talked about, and again, many people have lamented the opportunity when the old post office on Main Street was for sale, is that if we owned a property down there, we had multiple things that we could do with it. One of which possibility would be an incubator space for a business, right? We control the property. We can help seek out and encourage the tenant to come in of the kind of use that folks want on Main Street, frankly. So the idea presented itself. We proceeded with it. We have a Realtor we regularly work with to look at properties around the community. This one has come in before council because we didn't have specific authority to buy properties on Main Street. Folks may remember, within council meetings, council had previously given authority to staff to buy properties over on the Freeway Manor area. We have been doing that for quite a while, but I think it was about three or four years ago. We started in earnest on that, and so regularly we acquire properties over there. So it's part of our effort to move forward with Main Street, part of the discussions we have been having of what is the next step we can do to move forward. Obviously, part of the timing of this was to do it before the big physical improvements start because we think that'll kind of drive up property values. And as you know, we've already entered into the agreement with GVC. The big component there that they're working on under that is the design and ordering of equipment to underground the overhead utilities that are on Main Street to get the aesthetic look we want, to have not sidewalks interrupted by utility poles. The design from our engineering firm is well underway. The issue that, as those on the Main Street Committee know, is we've been dealing with, as part of that undergrounding, all of the utilities overhead, not just power, have to come underground. We've been working with those people who would need to go underground outside of power. And part of the issue is whether or not the conduit that currently there has capacity to accommodate the users or whether we need additional conduit in the ground. So we want to do the design one time, not have to come back and redesign on that. And so that's the reason for the acquisition of the property on Main Street. It fits with our vision to bring about the redevelopment, revitalization of Main Street. We think that benefits the adjacent neighborhoods. And what we really think it does for the community, right, is we have a lot of great things here. We have certainly Shirts stationed underway up on 35. But a lot of people want that unique place for their community. Frankly, we've seen success for other communities, Sibolo and Bronfels. And we want Main Street to be that for Shirts, that unique place that's unique to Shirts, where our residents can go and take pride in. So when somebody comes visit, say, let me take you to someplace different than you'll see elsewhere, and it's our Main Street.
Thank you. I make a motion that we approve Item Number 7. Resolution 25-R-171.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Hayward and a second by Councilwoman Watson. If there are no other discussions, can I get you all to cast your votes? Okay, I went ahead and just cleared the votes. Go ahead and cast your votes. All right, can I get the votes published, please? All right, we have six yays, no nays. Motion passes. Moving on to Item Number 8, Resolution 25-R-169, nominations and appointments to the Shirts-Seguin Local Government Corporation, SSLGC Board of Directors. Ms. Edmiston?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council and city staff. Tonight, I bring forward Resolution 25-R-169, appointments to the SSLGC Shirts-Seguin Local Government Corporation. Currently, there are three openings that are to be considered. The first one is appointing a member to fill the unexpired term. That is from January 1st, 2024, through December 31st, 2028. The second opening is appointing a member for a full term, January 1st, 2026, to December 31st, 2030. And last is the ex officio position is opening for the City of Shirts.
Mayor, as the interview committee and having conversations with Ms. Edmiston and Mr. James, we do have the recommendation to put Councilmember Robert Westbrook in the unexpired term to Councilmember Tim Brown. Then you, Mayor, as the ex officio. And then, if everyone is okay, I spoke with Chris Evans, who we wanted to put on the appraisal district, and we couldn't get the votes to have him be the SSLGC unofficial, the new term. And I have spoken with him, and he will be committed to go into those meetings on the one Thursday a month and be our representative, if everyone is okay with the recommendations.
Councilman Guerrero?
I'm good with that.
Councilman Macaluso?
Same here.
So...
Any other discussion?
No. I make a motion that we accept the names that I have given and we approve Resolution Number... I don't know why I'm trying to do this without my glasses. 25-R-169. And Ms. Edmiston, do you need the information now or after the meeting to give you those names?
After the meeting. And then that way, I'll go ahead and we'll get the mayor to sign that resolution and send it off to SSLGC first thing in the morning.
Okay, so I'll make that motion again.
Okay, we have a motion made by Councilwoman Hayward, and we have a second made by Councilman Macaluso. Go ahead and cast your votes. Go ahead...
I forgot to mention that going forward, we will put SSLGC and CVLGC under the interview committee to be looked at and interviewed for those positions as well.
Okay, go ahead.
For information.
All right, go ahead and cast your votes. All right, can we go ahead and publish the votes? All right, we have six yays, no nays. Motion passes. Moving on to Item Number 9, Resolution 25-R-153, Guadalupe Appraisal District Board of Directors Election, 2025. Ms. Edmiston?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Resolution 25-R-153 is a resolution for the City of Shirts to cast their 103 votes in the Guadalupe Appraisal District Board of Directors election for 2025. The ballot has four nominations. The first one is Ms. Letitia Serra. She was nominated, and she is with the SCUCISD. There is a Mr. Forrest Fletcher. He was nominated by the City of Seguin. Third was Ms. Danetta Roberts. She was nominated by the City of Sibolo. And the last was Dr. Alfred Burns. They did not indicate who nominated Mr. Burns. Dr. Alfred Burns, excuse me. So we have 103 votes that council can decide how they would like to cast.
Councilman Davis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we cast all 103 votes for Ms. Letitia Seaver.
All right, motion's been made by Councilman Davis, and a second's been made by Councilwoman Hayward. Can I get everybody to cast their votes? All right, can I get the votes published? All right, we have six yays, no nays. Motion passes. Moving on to Item 10, Resolution 25-R-167, Bear Appraisal District Board of Directors Election, 2025. Ms. Edmiston?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 25-R-167 is the resolution for the City of Shirts to cast two votes in the Bear Appraisal District Board of Directors election for 2025. The ballot for the Bear Appraisal District Board of Directors are: One, Dr. Ralph E. Barxdale, nominated by Bear County. Number two, Juliana Desick, nominated by the City of Almost Park. Number three, Ivalis Meza Gonzalez, nominated by the City of San Antonio. Number four, Gerald Lopez, nominated by the Alamo College District and Northside ISD. Number five, Lee Martinez, nominated by Harlandale ISD. Number six, Rolando Ramirez, nominated by Southside ISD. And the last candidate is Becky Ruiz, nominated by Harlandale ISD and Northside ISD.
Councilwoman Hayward?
I make a motion that we give the two votes to Gerald Lopez.
Councilman Davis? Did you have a comment?
No, sir.
Second.
Councilwoman, second. Any other comments on this item? All right, we have a motion by Councilwoman Hayward, and we have a second by Councilwoman Watson. Can I get everybody to cast their votes? Can I get the votes published? We have six yays, no nays. All right, moving on to Item Number 11, Resolution 25-R-168, Comal Appraisal District Board of Directors Election, 2025. Ms. Edmiston?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Resolution 25-R-168 is a resolution for the City of Shirts to cast their 69 votes in the Comal Appraisal Board of Directors elections for 2025. The ballot for the Comal Appraisal District Board of Directors is: Number one, Shawn Alvarez, nominated by Comal ISD. Number two, Case Brown, nominated by Comal ISD. And the third candidate was Aaron Craig O'Neil, nominated by Comal County.
Councilmember, have any comments? We have Councilwoman Hayward?
I recommend that we use all 69 votes for Mr. Craig O'Neil.
Any other comments by council?
I was going to use 69 for Shawn Alvarez.
Then how about we split the votes? We'll do... Okay. So we'll split the votes. 34, 35 for Shawn O'Neil and 34 for Craig... I mean, Shawn Alvarez and 35 for Shawn O'Neil.
If I could just clarify, that would be 35 votes for Mr. Shawn Alvarez and 35 votes for Mr. Craig O'Neil.
34.
Excuse me, 34 for Mr. Shawn.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I said 35, 34.
35 for Mr. Shawn, 34 for Mr. Shawn Alvarez and 35 for Mr. Craig O'Neil. You want 35 and 34. That's okay. It's been a long day.
I make a motion that we accept those numbers.
If I can get council to go ahead and cast the votes? Can I get the votes published? Having six yays, no nays. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edmiston. All right, Item Number 12 is for information available in City Council packets. No discussion to occur. Item Number 12 is petition for removal of property from the City of Shirts ETJ. Update on approximately 22.317 acres. ETJ released a northern Shirts near Old Nacogdoches Road within Comal County. Did you have any discussion? No, there are no discussions on that. Okay, moving on to requests and announcements. Request by mayor and council members for updates or information from staff?
Nothing for me, sir.
Nothing at this time.
Nothing for me.
Yeah, nothing at this time, sir.
Okay, moving on to request by mayor, council members that items or presentations be placed on any future city council agenda. All right, moving on to city and community events attended and to be attended by council.
Nothing for me, sir.
Nothing for me.
I just plan on participating in the Holidazzle events this week and this weekend.
Attend the celebration for Councilman Tim Brown.
I had a Shirts-Sibolo Universal City Independent School District Community Advisory Committee meeting.
I attended the Little Gym ribbon cutting. That was so fun. And I got to... On that one, I took my grandkids, and they had such a good time that we actually became patrons of that place. So they now will go every weekend for a month to do Little Gym. So thank you for bringing that one and getting that here. I attended the Northeast Partnership Luncheon. And then I went to Salt Lake City for the National League of Cities Fall Conference. And it was a great conference and learned a lot. And I'll be sending some information to you, Steve, on information I learned.
Okay, I too attended the Northeast Partnership Luncheon and also attended the Celebration Alive for Councilmember Tim Brown. And I do plan on participating and attending the Holidazzle. Since there are no other items up for discussion, this meeting remains adjourned at 6:44.